Good evening, everyone. So as our guests take their seats, I'm Harold Holzer, and I'm the director of Roosevelt House. And it's a pleasure and an honor for us to welcome you to this, what I'm told is the fifteenth discussion among the candidates for the speakership, and the last, which sort of makes them really excited, that this is the climactic moment of their discussions. So we're gathered, for those of you who've never been in this auditorium, we're gathered to, in this wonderful found space that lives here within the home that Franklin and Eleanor Roosevelt occupied from 1908 until Franklin left to assume the presidency in 1933. This was, thinking back for comparative purposes to recent history, this was the transition headquarters for the Roosevelt administration. No comparisons offered, but this was the place where Franklin Roosevelt conceived of the threads that made up the New Deal: Social Security, minimum wage, the Works Progress Administration, all originated a couple of floors up in his library in meetings with practitioners and experts and future members of his cabinet. So it's a history that imbues us all day and every day as we have public events and meet with students, and I hope it inspires a good discussion tonight, especially on this focus. As some of you may know, earlier this week, we hosted a discussion on the issue of the legal challenge to the ban on transgender people serving in the military. We had Chase Strangio here, who is the transgender attorney who is representing the ACLU challenge to the president's ban. So it's appropriate that, as we continue this week, we're having this discussion here, and that's one of the reasons why we're so pleased to host it at Roosevelt House, not only because of the four freedoms that Roosevelt crafted and that are emblazoned on our wall back there. As you all know, I hope Eleanor Roosevelt was the chair of the UN Committee that codified those aspirations into the International Declaration of Human Rights. And she probably would have responded to this debate tonight and this focus by requoting her famous quote, "Justice cannot be for one side alone, it must be for all." So that's another Eleanor inspiration. We are really honored that our friends at Girls for Gender Equity came to us and asked if they could host this debate here in these hallowed halls. And, oh, I'm so glad that our councilman-elect is here, because I get to make the joke that I had to put to the side. Keith, there's a seat for you right here. So I was going to say that we're really honored that among this wonderful packed house is the one voting member of the audience, our councilman-elect from this area, Keith Powers. Anyway, we're honored to be joined by seven of the eight declared members of the council who have announced their candidacy for the speakership. And I'm going to do their names in alphabetical order. Robert Cornegy from Brooklyn, Corey Johnson from Manhattan, Mark Levine from Manhattan, Donovan Richards from Queens, Adonis Rodriguez from Manhattan, Jimmy Van Bramer from Queens, and Jomani Williams from Brooklyn. So now let me turn over the mic to someone who really is one of the inspirations for this event. Joanne Smith is the founder and executive director of Girls for Gender Equity. She moves the organization toward its mission every day through strategic advocacy, leadership cultivation, and other areas. She co-chaired the nation's first Young Women's Initiative for Girls of Color in New York City. She's a steering committee member of the Black Girl Movement and a movement maker with the organization Move to End Violence, a ten-year initiative designed to strengthen the collective capacity to end gender-based violence within the United States. She's featured on the summer 2016 Gender Justice issue of Yes! magazine, sharing her experience and her experiences about intersectional feminism. It's wonderful to invite her up. Oh, her principal claim to fame is that she's an alumna of Hunter College's Graduate School of Social Work. Please welcome Joanne Smith.
Good evening. Harold, thank you for that, and thank you again for hosting this event, this first and this only New York City Council Speaker Candidate Forum. And yes, the last, we expect you to leave it all on the cutting room floor, especially tonight as we really take a deep dive and focus on trans and gender nonconforming young people, on cis girls and young women of color in New York City, on the lives of young people who oftentimes are at their most vulnerable points when dealing with systems and with culture, but are often the leaders and the forerunners, leading cultural revolution, standing up for injustices, and being brilliant, you know, in their own right, especially once given opportunities and obstacles are removed. So we look forward to really challenging, especially you all as cis men who are here representing the speakership, right? And we look forward to really getting a sense of what it, where it is that you come from with these issues, what you have done, and your vision, right? What are the strategies that you have learned about from other organizations? Have you learned about from your community? What are you willing to take on to address the issues that most impact trans and non-binary youth and gender nonconforming youth? We're in the final weeks of City Council member Melissa Marvavirito's speakership, and we know right now it's a critical moment in the nation, right? It's a critical moment around gender discrimination and violence. We have millions right now saying "me too" when it comes to experiencing patriarchy at its ugliest. This is a watershed moment, and we're here to expose and hold accountable and dismantle the systems and the cultural biases that breed rape culture and sexual violence. And we're here to do that with intersectional analysis and a re-centering of youth voices. I mean, even tonight, we have our very own Time People Person of the Year, Taronna Burke, to help, to help really hold accountable our moral compass as a nation and shift it. And so Speaker Melissa Marvavirito sought to do that during her term. She made New York City the first in the nation to lead a Young Women's Initiative. Under her leadership, the New York City Council sought to identify gaps of services for young people, young women and girls ages 12 to 24 years old, with a focus on women of color and trans youth and gender nonconforming young people. Now, seven other cities, right, are following that lead, this national initiative that was birthed here in New York City. Today, several candidates who are here to succeed her are gathered here, and they really have big shoes to fill. They have big shoes to fill. So we'll first have our first male speaker in over a decade, right, filling this position. And fewer women will be in the City Council. Most of the Women's Committee members will be leaving. And so because of this, it's especially critical to know that they're firmly and tangibly committed to the well-being of young women and TGNC youth of color. So we at Girls for Gender Equity, at the Women of Color for Progress, at Brooklyn Movement Center, at the Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender Community Center, at Power Her NY, at Planned Parenthood of New York City, the National Organization for Women of New York City, the New Leaders Council, the New Institute for Reproductive Health, Brotherhood, Sister Soul, the Campaign for Black Male Achievement, the Citizens Committee for Children, Eleanor's Legacy, and the National Association of Social Workers New York City Chapter call on the next speaker to boldly join government's leaders, advocates, policy experts, and youth to combat systemic inequities experienced by young people. New York City deserves nothing less from our speaker, and expect that you'll be willing to champion the progressive strategies that have come before you, be willing to uplift and put in place policies and practices that will transform the lives of our young people in this city. Tonight's forum will be moderated by Politico's Laura Namos. Namos? Okay, cool. And Shatia Burks of New York City Young Women's Initiative. And just to tell you a little bit about Laura and Shatia, Laura is a reporter for Politico New York, covering City Hall and Mayor Bill de Blasio. Before she began covering City Hall last summer, she wrote about Albany politics for Politico New York. She has also written for The City and State, The Wall Street Journal, and The New York Post. A native of Memphis, Tennessee, Laura earned her undergraduate degree from Wellesley University in Connecticut before earning a master's degree in journalism at Columbia University. Shatia, I'm an adult fan, right? Shatia is leading the way in the moment, not even in the future, just right now, as a young person in New York. And many of you may remember her from Speaker Melissa Marvavirito's City, right, City of State announcement or City of City announcement. She's state of the city. Well, good, you're on it already, look at that. Shatia Burks is an alumni of the New York City Council's Young Women's Advisory Council that was part of the Young Women's Initiative. Burks served as a youth expert for the Young Women's Initiative Community Support and Opportunity Work Group, helping address the needs of young women and girls living in poverty. Burks dedicated herself to ensuring that intimate, that the initiative catered to economically disadvantaged young women holistically. She pushes others to remain resilient, strive for excellence, and achieve their goals. And so tonight, you're joined by the best as they moderate this panel and really ask the burning questions that will come through the audience, that have been drafted by the organizations, that really came together to bring this event together, and that will come through Twitter and Facebook in real time. And so I welcome to the stage Laura and Shatia.
Hi, I'm Laura Namias from Politico New York, and thank you so much for having, thank you so much for inviting me to be here. It's an honor, and it's an honor to interview all of you guys and hear what you have to say.
And good evening, I'm Shatia Burks. It's an honor to be here, and I'll be giving you the start of your show. So here's how today's program will go. First, you'll hear councilmembers' introductions, then Laura and I will ask a couple of long-form questions focused on council leadership and issues across the areas of health, economic development, anti-violence, and criminal justice, community support, and opportunity. And then we'll have an audience lightning round followed by a social media lightning round. Finally, we'll do a closing round. Here are some notes for audience and viewers. Please submit your questions via index cards by 7:00 PM. Submit questions via social media using the hashtag #SheWillBe and hashtag #GenderEquityNYC.
Okay, so now I'm going to give all of you each a minute, which is really a long time, to introduce yourselves and tell everyone here who you are and a little bit about yourself, starting with Councilman Cornegy.
Good evening. My name is Councilmember Robert Cornegy. I represent the vibrant communities of Bedford-Stuyvesant and Crown Heights. Bed-Stuy is in the house, okay? Oh, Crown Heights is in the house, okay. I guess one of the important things about myself is that I am a husband and father of six. So there's a lot of jokes that could be associated with that that I probably won't go into, but I have had the pleasure of working in a very progressive council, and I've had progressive issues that were germane to my community and women's health and reproductive health that were important to me. I most have the distinction of having the first public lactation station in the state of New York, and consequently have authored legislation that makes lactation stations available in public buildings across the city of New York. I'm very proud of that. I ran on a campaign of a woman's right to choose and marriage equality in a largely ecumenical community, and based on that, won by probably the slimmest margin in New York City in 2013 by 68 votes, but was really bent on making sure that that voice could be carried loudly. And basically, I co-chair the Men Who Get It Caucus at the New York City Council.
Good evening, I'm Corey Johnson. It's so nice to be here with all of you. I'm not going to tell you about my district and where I come from. I think we'll talk about that probably during some of the questions tonight, but I just want to say I'm so glad we're having this forum that's focused on these issues. You know, I'm an openly gay man. I'm the only openly HIV-positive elected official in the state of New York. And the issues that I think that are going to be talked about tonight with regard to trans women, you know, and issues related to non-binary folks in New York City are deeply important and issues that really matter to me. I think the bill that I'm most proud of that I passed over the last four years was a bill allowing transgender New Yorkers to get accurate birth certificates and to correct their birth certificates. That's probably my proudest achievement in the council when it comes to legislation. There's an epidemic of violence against trans women of color in New York City. People are getting murdered, and these are issues that are really important to talk about, especially as men. And so I look forward to having this discussion tonight. Thank you.
Councilman Levine, would you mind, and would all the rest of the councilmembers mind standing up when you speak, just so that the people who are watching on the live stream, sorry?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Mark Levine, representing the seventh council district. And I'm not going to tell you anything about my district now either, except one little fact, which we are home to the world-famous Brotherhood, Sister Soul, which is here tonight. Thank you for coming out. You know, I just want to remark that the fact that the eight people running for council speaker are all men reflects a failing of the political system in New York City. We're very quick to criticize other parts of the country, but this is a failing that originates in New York and politics and society here, and one we have to correct before the next cycle in 2021, and one we have to deal with in the next four years to empower women in the body. I think it does obligate the eight of us to rein in the hubris a little bit and do more listening than dictating. And I know tonight is about us speaking out, and we have an obligation to do that. But I think my colleagues all share the notion that we need to listen now, that women need to be heard, that trans people need to be heard, that nonconforming people need to be heard now more than ever. And I certainly look forward to that conversation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Councilmember Richards. I'm going to follow Councilmember Levine's lead. I am a proud representative of Southeast Queens, Roseland, Lawton, Springfield Gardens, and the Rockaways, and I just want to echo that it is shameful that there is not a woman in this race this year, and a lot of that, once again, has to do with our political system. I do also want to say that the next speaker is going to have an obligation to make sure that not only are we hearing from women, but that we are ensuring that they are in leadership positions in the council that mean something to this city. So when we look at committees, when we look at giving up leadership roles in the budget negotiating team committees, it is going to be critical that women are at the forefront of leadership roles in the council, because once again, we're not women, but we have an obligation to hear and to ensure that leadership is reflected in the council that will ensure that the issues, which every issue in the city is a woman issue, and that those issues are reflected at the forefront of the council's policy-driven things, but also in terms of funding initiatives and other things as well. So I look forward to the discussion today. We have a lot of work to do in this city, and I look forward to supporting that work.
Thank you to the organizers for bringing us together. I'm one of those New Yorkers born and raised in another country, so I'm one of those 38% who know what it is to come here at the age of 18, living poverty back in the island of Ipanema, raising a family of 12 brothers and sisters. The oldest one, there were seven women first, so the oldest one was the last one being married. Her commitment was to be a role model for the rest of the sister and for the youngest one. I believe that we have a responsibility to work hard to leave our society better for the future generation. As has been said before, women issues are transactions. This is about, this isn't about one particular issue. This is about opportunity to have, to be equal. This is about having control of the body. This is about opportunity to have, to be in position of leadership. If I will become the speaker, I will be that person that will continue following the legacy that we have from the great Speaker Melissa Marvavirito. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jimmy Van Bramer from Western Queens. When I was about 10 or 11 years old, I realized I was a little bit different than the other boys, partly because I had a crush on Stephen Stradajacchi, who was really, really adorable. And it took me a decade to come out of the closet, but when I came out of the closet and I decided I was going to fight for my freedom, I remember women at the Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender Community Center tell me that your struggle for freedom is connected to our struggle for freedom. And being a gay, lesbian, bisexual, transgender civil rights activist also means that you're an activist for choice and for a woman's right to choose, and the two of them are inseparable. So I've always believed in that. That's always been a core bedrock philosophy of who I am. And so in my work in the City Council, I'm really proud that before I was a councilmember, there was no Planned Parenthood Health Center in Queens, serving two and a half million people. And I insisted that it be in my district. There is a Planned Parenthood Health Center in Queens right now, providing the full range of services for women, men, the trans community. Also, many of you have heard, there is now a Girl Scout troop for homeless girls, the first ever of its kind in New York City. I was really proud to help found that Girl Scout troop, Troop 6000 for Homeless Girls. I want to bring that kind of leadership on behalf of all women, all in the trans community, as your next speaker. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Jomani Williams, Councilman for the 45th District. Thank you for having this. I'm just pleased to be here and so happy that this group has allowed the voices that sometimes get left out to be the ones in the forefront, CHANS, TGNC, cis women of color, that's amazing, thank you. I didn't hear anyone talk about women's issues, because I know that's refreshing, because all women, all issues are women's issues, we know that. So we shouldn't be talking about how to put women's issues forward. We need to be making sure that women are involved in all things that we discuss, and that's the way that I want to move forward in doing so. I'm proud of so many bills that I hope to talk about during this day. But I want to make sure I say a few things. One, I think most of us are going to give similar answers to the questions. One thing I want to say about myself is that I'm battle-tested to move forward. City and state labeled me as the second most productive councilmember in the council behind the speaker, the number-one most productive speaker candidate that's running. And I believe not only in quantity, meaning the most legislation passed by anyone besides a speaker, quality, dense, I probably passed the most controversial bills in the City Council without dividing the body. And I would love to have a discussion if anyone wants to challenge what I'm saying, but it's important, because in this time of Trump, of where we are now, we need someone who's not going to fold, we need someone who's going to stand strong, I have a history of doing that, and would love to help you talk about that today. Thank you.
Shall we get started, then? So I'm going to start with Councilmember Cornegy. The city is often the only level of government that is proactive in protecting access to abortion and other reproductive health care. With the City Council taking the lead for over 15 years, how will you work to ensure access to clinics protect New Yorkers from predatory crisis pregnancy centers and safeguard insurance coverage for contraception?
Just the last part, would you ask again?
How will you protect New Yorkers from predatory crisis pregnancy centers and safeguard insurance coverage for contraception?
So certainly, you know, in partnership, oh, my pleasure. So listen, one of the biggest problems that we face is not protecting those individuals who seek services in these crisis pregnancy centers. And I think that a partnership with law enforcement that has a focus on that as an issue is important, and putting the resources and making sure there's even a special unit that's designed to deal directly with the trauma associated with having to exit and enter and protect those, it would be a priority, has been a priority for me and would continue to be a priority as a speaker.
Thank you for the question. So on all three points. Number one, the council, I think, has done a really good job at coming up with money in the budget annually to support organizations like Planned Parenthood and other groups that work on reproductive choice and reproductive health issues. And I would, of course, continue that and support that. We have to put together lists every year of our priorities, and Planned Parenthood is always on my list that I put forward to ask for an increase in money when we're deciding the budget. Crisis pregnancy centers, I know that Councilmember Lappin, when she was in the council, took on these quackery, phony groups that try to take advantage of unsuspecting folks that are in a bad spot and are looking for help. And we need to do all we can to rein them in. There have been court cases around it, it's been litigated, I believe at the federal level. The council still has to keep pushing the envelope. And then, lastly, places like Planned Parenthood and other places where women can go to get an abortion, these protesters are up front. The police need to do more to ensure that there is no violence or intimidation against women when they go to get a safe and legal abortion.
Well, I love the way you framed this question, because at a time when the national government is run by a misogynist in the White House and congressional leadership, which is openly and avowedly opposed to women's reproductive rights, to trans rights, at a time when states around the country, in many cases, are assaulting these very same rights. We do, thank goodness, control local government in the city. We have progressive leadership on both sides of City Hall, and so we have an obligation to protect the people of the city, the women of the city, trans New Yorkers, gender nonconforming New Yorkers, to protect our values and to use our resources to fill the gaps that are left by assaults from the federal government. And that in part means that we're going to need to spend, if benefits like contraception are cut out of the health plans that so many New Yorkers rely on, then we as a city are going to have to make access to that available. And we need to be in our schools and our jails and our universities, providing the medical care, the health care that women need. And we need to fight back against the demonization of Planned Parenthood by funding it, by celebrating it, by allowing access, by protecting the women who are seeking whatever medical care or other services they are there. The city government can and must do that, and the speaker needs to be very firm in leading the body towards those goals. This will be top on my agenda in the next four years and must be for the entire body. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll start with the first thing. First off, communities like mine are certainly being underserved. So I think one of the things we should certainly be looking at, in particular for communities like the Rockaways, communities of color, who quite naturally aren't even getting the services and have to travel to Long Island City to get services, we need to look at expanding centers around the city first and foremost, into the core communities that where people are living in the shadows because they don't have particular places to gather. I'll say, secondly, that we have an obligation to push the police department to do their jobs. And whether that means a dedicated stream of funding or unit or something that sets people right outside those centers to protect people's own right to do what they wish is going to be important as well. I'll say, thirdly, funding organizations, organic organizations located in pockets of our city that don't exist right now, I meant who are receiving very little funding, is going to also be important as well. We have to build capacity in communities that are underserved, and right now, that is not being done. There are people in my community who are living in the shadows. I had the pleasure of visiting a center just a few weeks ago where it was very evident to me that the work is not being done the way it needs to be. to me that the work is not being done the way it needs to, and we're going to have to make sure that our budget priorities speak loud at the next council as well.
First of all, I've been at the council for a year and working under Kristen Queen and now Melissa Maravita. We've been big supporter of Planned Parenthood. That's what we need to continue doing in our city, working with those institutions that work very hard twenty-four-seven, not only in those centers that we have now, but to continue expanding those centers throughout the city of New York. I was a co-founder of a school in nineteen ninety-three after graduating from City College, the same year when Chancellor Fernandez, you know, was on the attack because he wanted to create, to introduce sex education in our schools. This is something that also we need to be sure. First of all, that we go after those centers that are misleading our women when they are decided to take a decision related to the control of their body. Second, to continue supporting Parenthood. And third, being sure that we educate our students so that they get to get more information about their decision that they make with the body that belongs to them.
Thanks. So as I mentioned in my opening, I have a proven record of making sure that Planned Parenthood's services are expanded. There's a few people in this room who were there when Planned Parenthood first came to my office and said, you know, we're thinking of opening up a center because there is none in Queens, serving two and a half million people, but we wanted to talk to you and see if you would be approving of that before we go any further. And I said, not only do I approve it, but it has to be in my district. I will fight to get this Planned Parenthood Health Center in my district, and we did. And then, when they needed another five hundred thousand dollars or so in capital money, we went and we got that funding so that Planned Parenthood could open and provide the full range of services. On the second issue, I have been there at the front of health centers that provide abortion services. I have been walking in with someone very close to me who was seeking those services and knowing how painful a day that was in her life for her to encounter what she encountered was disgraceful and outrageous, and we should absolutely do everything we can to push those people back and make sure that they are not victimizing women who are going to get health services. And the third part is, all contraceptives should be covered absolutely one hundred percent, and if they're not, the city councils should make sure they are.
Thank you. In the opening statement, I didn't get to mention something I said before in another debate, which is, one, all men running, I apologize. And I mean that sometimes partially jest, but mostly really seriously. And I said it before, just recognizing my own privilege as a cisgendered male, any contribution I made to an environment that made women feel that they could not run. And so we have to recognize our privilege here and making sure we're addressing that environment and whatever we're doing, and I mean that sincerely. To the question, most, because we're the city, not a lot of things come before the body to vote on. Obviously, we're in the age of an orange man who's doing a lot of crazy things, and the city is important that we do whatever we can creatively. One of those was the crisis pregnancy centers. My father, God rest his soul, was a physician. My mother is a pharmacist. My sister's a nurse. I understand the differences. And to me, it's not about personal whatever, it's about whether you're trying to deceive someone. They absolutely were, so I was happy to vote against what it was that they're doing. I agree, if someone is going to get a service, they should be protected, and we want to make sure they are protected without the rowdy protesters around them. Lastly, I'm looking forward to getting a bill passed the next session that I put forward, commonly called the Boss Bill, which will prevent any retaliation or discrimination from a supervisor or employer to an employee based on their reproductive decisions. I was appalled to find out that that was not even against the law in this city. Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. And please, there are two people here with signs telling you when the time's up. Just try to stay as close to the amount of time that we have as possible while obviously finishing your thought. I'm going to start with, we're doing like a round robin sort of thing. I'm going to start with you, Councilmember Johnson, on education. How will your educational priorities ensure that all students, especially those who face more obstacles such as students who are parents, students who are subject to being pushed out of school because of what some people say are racially biased disciplinary policies, students in foster care, low-income students, undocumented students, and LGBT and gender non-conforming students receive the education they need to succeed as adults? And please be specific.
Okay, I'm going to tell you my story very, very quickly in twenty seconds. I came out when I was sixteen years old in Massachusetts in nineteen ninety-nine. I was the only openly gay student in a school of fifteen hundred kids. I became captain of the football team, so I was in a position of privilege in coming out in that position. And that experience is what got me involved in activism, which got me involved in politics. All of those groups you mentioned are folks that really need our help. They're the most marginalized, oppressed, and disadvantaged group in the city of New York. What we need to do is ensure that we are not being punitive against students in school, but are actually being supportive and rehabilitative. It's about mediation, it's about meeting people where they are, it's about getting people the support that they need, and it's not about being punitive. DOE, Councilmember Drum came up with an LGBT liaison, which has been doing trainings all throughout the school system, which is great. Councilmember Gibson and I passed a bill that goes to school safety agents and what they should be doing with underserved students in the school system. My track record is great on it. I want to learn from all of you about what else I should be doing on those issues. Thank you.
Well, I'm a huge believer in the community-school model, which provides not just educational services, but mental health services, medical services, eye care services, social work services in the school building, where this is done right around the city. It does help marginalized young people succeed in the academic setting. It helps all children. And I do want to mention about the challenge of bullying and the frequent entanglement with homophobia that this unfortunate phenomenon is associated with in our schools, as we saw most dramatically in the terrible incident at Bronx High School of Wildlife Studies. And I don't think that our school system and our school leadership has adequately acknowledged the role that bias plays in bullying and that particularly young people who are gender non-conforming, who are trans, who are struggling with their identity at an age which is difficult for everybody, are subjected often to the most humiliating treatment by peers. And that's a failure of adults who do not support those young people, and often it's a failure of a system that tells those adults that they could be punished if they intervene in such cases. So we need a reckoning with that, and we need to do better by young people of all backgrounds in our schools.
I'll say community schools is certainly the answer. I've seen it working right in my own district. In particular, I have a school, QIRT, which is located in the Far Rockaway High School campus. When I got elected, their graduation rate was something around fifty-two percent. And what we've seen happening over the course of the last three years is graduation rates soar up nearly twenty percent. It's at around seventy-two percent now. Why? Because the school is offering wraparound services to students, so things around immigration, GED help, not just for the students, but also for the parents. We have a health clinic located right in the school, so even if you're uninsured, not only do the student have access to it, but the parent has access to it. Vocational training, all of these things are being offered in this ecosystem in the school, and it's really helping to nurture the students who, in particular in the Rockaways, don't have access to many of these things. So I would say the expansion of community schools, certainly more recently, I put a million dollars in the school myself to build out a computer lab. They're learning something called Cisco within the school, which is your time WarnerBox programming, and actually leaving with certification so that they can actually go right into working in industry as well, which is a way to lift them up economically. So I think community schools is certainly an important model here.
I can be the speaker that I can share with you that I have a role model in northern Manhattan, but for the first time, all elementary school in our history, they are in good standard in school district six. That has been happening in the last four years. Before I came here, I was at American Museum, applying to my daughter's school science program. Starting in sixth grade, it's a seven-year commitment. Most of the kid applying there does not represent women, female, and a student of color. I will make every single school in New York City community school. No need to expand it because if you, if any child live in a C code, what is a more middle-class and upper-middle-class, they are community school by the program that the school offer after school and weekend. I know that coding technology is leaving behind women and students of color. We have the most segregated education system in the whole nation. It's a shame for all of us. We had to start educational civil rights movement in January, January twenty eighteen, so that we can address what is that we need to do to take the necessary step to close the gap of quality education for every single child.
Thank you. So I think we all agree, look, racism, sexism, transphobia, homophobia prevent young people from being who they want to be and who they are and actually prevent them from achieving in school unless we are actually actively doing something to combat those things in the schools and giving those young people the space to be who they are and to succeed. And when I was in Bryan High School, Corey, I was not on the football team, unfortunately. But instead, I actually went through the darkest period of my life where I was near-suicidal because I didn't want to go to school, right? I absolutely stopped going to school, lying to my mother and telling her I was going to school, but actually going to the top of our apartment building and spending the day on the roof. I preferred to do that than going to school because I was tired of hearing everyone yell "gay boy" or "faggot" and all of those things. Now, we know that young people experience that every day in school on so many different levels in so many different ways. All of us have to make sure that that stops once and for all and all children are safe to go to school.
My mom happens to be a woman, and when you speak about intersectionality, strong black woman, with this issue in particular, having to deal with school and raising two knucklehead kids by herself because my dad, rest his soul, made another choice. I have Tourette syndrome, ADHD, I'm a Brooklyn public school baby. If my mother wasn't who she was, I wouldn't be here. She was allowed to be involved, and my teachers who cared about me were allowed to be involved. And that's something I think we need to bring back to it. If it wasn't, not that there's anything wrong with the special education, but young black boys, the troubled ones, that's the path they go. And thanks to my mother, that didn't happen. To the question in particular, the biggest thing that I think we can do is change how we're educating. If the groups that were discussed are not in the curriculum, then people are not being taught about them. And one of the biggest things that I've learned is when you learn about people, you learn that they're just people, and the fear begins to go away. So all the things my colleagues said are true and we have to do, but changing the curriculum is supremely important. I don't know what I would have done without my mother's supplemental education so I can learn more about just than Rosa Parks, I can learn about Fan Luhayma, I can learn about Angela Davis, supplementing that education so I can learn an entirety of who people are and make sure my mind frame is not myopic. So unfortunately, we still live in the most segregated education system in the country. And when we talk about segregation, generally, we're talking about ethnicity. But there are these subtle nuances in segregation that allow for bullying and discrimination and biases as it relates to sexual orientation. And until we're ready to address that from a DOE level perspective, we're going to still have these problems. So there are schools that have been developed that are designed to deal directly with certain demographics, but it almost feels like isolation. So until we're ready to have an integrated system that's for every type of student, no matter what their sexuality is, no matter what their religion or race is, we're going to struggle. Now, I'm blessed to have a community school in my district, and I've watched at Boys and Girls High School, and I watched how those integrative services have been essential in the growth and development and empowerment of young people. So young people who came in without the access to services now are more confident or more ready to address issues that they face, and I think that's the answer that we need to be looking at.
Thank you. Okay, next we'll have economic and workforce development. I'm going to start with you, Councilmember Levine. In this political moment, sexual harassment at work, a long-time reality for cis and trans women and GNC folks, is finally being pushed into the forefront. Founder of the Me Too Movement, Tarana Burke, head of the programs of Girls for Gender Equity, helped pave the way. The city council sets an example when it comes to safe and healthy workplaces. What is a model policy for addressing sexual harassment in workplaces in schools?
Well, at a time when we're in the midst of a very long overdue but painful reckoning on this issue that we've seen play out in Hollywood, in the newsrooms, in Congress, in the White House, we would be dangerously naive to think that our own workforce here in New York City is immune from that. And we need to deal with that openly and transparently now. And I have been pushing some policies together with Majority Leader Van Brimer to ensure that our city government lives up to the highest standards, that our city council workforce lives up to the highest standards, so that survivors feel heard, so that they get information, and so that our city can understand these trends. And very, very briefly, because I know I'm out of time, I'll say that we have several bills moving that are going to require a reporting from every agency in New York City on the number of incidents of sexual harassment. We don't have that today, and we'll require that at the city council, we set an even higher standard so that when staff, when there are cases of sexual abuse by staff, that that is reviewed at the highest level, which is our Committee on Ethics, something which until now, we've reserved only for abuse by elected officials, and I'll talk more about that when I have more time.
First off, I'll start by saying there should be zero tolerance for this behavior. If you engage in this behavior, you need to be gone, whether you're staff, whether you're elected, zero tolerance. Secondly, I think there needs to be somewhat of an independent person or body or agency that really handles these particular complaints when people make them. You know, one of the things we're seeing at the federal level, when you look at Congress, is that their system is designed to victimize the victim. And we have to make sure that there's an independent body that people feel comfortable going to, to make these complaints. There should be no bureaucracy. When you make a complaint, you should feel like you're really being heard, and these things should be investigated right rapidly, not next month, right away. We need to investigate and take action to ensure that we're protecting our workforce here right in New York City. I think the most important thing is to send the message that we will have zero tolerance for this in New York City.
Sexual harassment is unacceptable, it doesn't matter what happened. I think that there should be independent offices where everyone should be mandated to report. It shouldn't be passing the information or sharing the information in the same agency. I know that in the DOE, I used to be a teacher for thirteen years, and with this one case of sexual harassment, teachers did not report it to the garden council, to the principal. You need to make the phone call directly to the central office. I think that this is something that can help us because we have to send the message loud and clear that there's consequences, but also we need to do more education in our school. You know, a lot of things happen on how human beings are conditioned to how they are a sector in their life, what is the other people, the level of control that other people, especially in the still macho society where we live. We need to be sure that our children are raised with those value, understanding, that everyone, that in order to affect any type of relationship, it has to be a mutual consent and to send the message that sexual harassment, again, isn't a sector, it doesn't matter what happened.
Thank you. So as Councilmember Levine alluded to a few weeks ago, I introduced a couple of bills. One is geared towards nonprofit organizations in the city that receive city funding, making sure that they are reporting their incidents of sexual harassment and then what they're doing about that sexual harassment and making that public because it's really important to be transparent. I agree with the council member that we should also do that at the city council level. But I have another bill that says that if there is an agency where there is a pattern of sexual harassment and nothing is being done about it, is being tolerated at that agency, that we would reserve the right to withdraw funding from that organization because there has to be teeth in this. People have to know, we mean business, this is serious stuff. And I don't just come to this because of the moment that is so incredibly important happening in this country right now, but I, as a young man at a nonprofit agency, was sexually harassed by the executive director of that agency. It was incredibly scary, it was unclear who I could go to, if I could go to anyone. That's why it's incredibly important that there is a safe space to go to where you know you're going to be listened to and heard and believed, but also you're not going to be punished because I was fired after I filed a sexual harassment complaint. because I was fired after I filed a sexual harassment complaint.
Just so proud of the eight years I have spent here. So besides my mother and my sister, I'm making sure I'm always oriented properly. People like Jelissa Ferris Copeland, Lori Combo, Melissa Marfa Rito, helping me make sure I understand that no issue, no, there's no such things as women's issues. All issues are women's issues. People like Helen Rosenthal, co-chair of Women's Caucus, making sure that issues are moved forward. What's important to me, being a black man, understanding that, subconsciously, I had to learn how to shop while being followed. I had to learn to ignore racist comments that I heard. And I brought that to say when the legend, Ms. Burke, did the Me Too Movement and all that came. I think the one thing that we all could do immediately, and I tried to do, was believe. Just believe what is being told to you. And as I spoke to other women around me, I was astonished by what I heard, even worse than what I had heard, what they had to deal with just to survive. This was nothing new. It had always, always been there. And the one thing silver lining I hope comes out of it is now that it's exposed, there will be accountability and there will be change culturally in how we do things. So I support my colleagues' bills. I'm proud that the city council thankfully hasn't heard the scandals that we've heard from up top. And I hope that it never will. But these kind of bills are important. And us, as cisgender men, making sure that we are not a part of a culture that is allowing this to continue.
So fortunately and unfortunately for me, I have two roles. I have the role as a legislator, but the role as a father and a community figure and a black male, which makes me ultimately responsible for having young black men model the behavior that we would like for them to see. So there is this fallacy, many of you may not know, but I played basketball a little bit, right? So there's this, there's this fallacy that there is language and behavior that's acceptable and it falls under the umbrella of locker room talk. So we have to begin to dismantle the idea that that's even remotely acceptable. So that's first and foremost. I have a bill now that would make it, that would be a law that would, any small business would have to detail in their business what constitutes sexual harassment and a hotline number to call. So every business in the city of New York would have a checklist so you could walk by that and see whether or not what you're feeling actually meets the mandate of what constitutes sexual harassment and you could call on that.
And I feel sick to my stomach every day when I turn the news on and I see what's happening all over the country. As Councilmember Levine said, the different industries that we're seeing. I want to thank Councilman Van Bremmer for the package of bills he put forward and Councilman Rosenthal and Levine for the announcement they made today on the steps to City Hall combating this within the council, but also other agencies and nonprofits across the city. Of course, sexual harassment is unacceptable. Sexual violence is unacceptable. But also the things that I think I witness and I have done my best to call people out when I see it, women being catcalled on the streets of New York City, being hollered at, yelled at, ogled at, talked at. It's really gross. And it's something that I don't have to experience. When I walk down the street, I don't worry about crossing the street to avoid a group of people catcalling me. We need to, of course, ensure that our policies have teeth to them. We also have to change the culture so that men do not feel like, in a public setting, they can act or behave in any way towards someone else because they have power and domination over them. We need to change that.
I'm just curious, really quickly, to Councilman Richards, you called for the creation of an independent body to address sexual harassment?
I didn't mean body, but in HR department or...
Within the city?
Within the city.
Doesn't the Commission on Human Rights already do that? Or are you talking about some...
Well, I'm talking about within the council body. So within the council's body. But yes, there are ways to make sure that even within that department that, you know, it's more prevalent that the public knows that it actually exists as well.
Right.
So, yeah.
Thank you for clarifying. Anyone who has questions that they've written out on an index card, if you would pass them to the people at the back of the room at this point. And I am going to move on to the subject of anti-violence and criminal justice. And I'm going to start with you, Councilman Richards. And since I have you here and also since Councilman Johnson is here, I thought it might be good to ask if you would, I know the other candidates have committed to this, if you would commit to bringing the Right to Know Act to the floor for a vote if you were elected speaker? And if the mayor were to veto it, would you seek to override the veto? Just since we're here.
So I have personal experience in this. My first experience coming into the world as a teenager, I was actually stopped and frisked. And I didn't know anything better. You know, the police said, "Do you have anything in your pocket?" And I went into my pocket and actually guns were drawn on me. So I have some experience in this. I don't have to speak about this academically. And it wasn't my last experience, obviously, with stop and frisk. So in terms of your question to the Right to Know Act, absolutely. This is not a mind-boggling bill. I think it just makes common sense. If you treat people correctly, there will be no consequences. But to stop unjustifiably black men and women in the trans community, unjustifiably, people need to be held accountable. So if the mayor was to try to veto this bill, absolutely, we would fight tooth, teeth, tooth and nail to ensure that we overrode that veto. But I think it is critical to ensuring that we're building trust with the police in communities that these two bills, that the package moves forward.
And you, Councilman Johnson?
I feel like I've already committed to this and talked about it in many other debates. The answer is yes and yes. I mean, not to be more nuanced, but I do want to respect Councilmember Torres and Reynoso and their negotiations and the advocates in the process and the police department. That's not me backing away from it. But if I'm speaker, if any of us are speaker, we have to talk to the two colleagues who were involved, talk to the advocates, as the current speaker's been doing, and figure out where things are. I don't really know where things are right now. I know what I read on Politico, but I don't really know what's actually happening behind closed doors in negotiations. No one's telling me that. So if I'm speaker, I'm going to have to get up to speed and figure that out.
Thank you very much. I'll move on to the actual question now. Elected officials, advocates and community members are pushing for greater police accountability and transparency, obviously. Recently, two NYPD officers were indicted on first degree rape charges for raping a handcuffed 18-year-old woman inside their police van in Brooklyn. I'm sure we've all heard about this. Trans and gender non-conforming New Yorkers, particularly those of color, experience frequent negative interactions with the NYPD. And immigrant women, particularly in this climate, may feel less likely to report crimes out of a fear of deportation, specifically things like domestic violence. What changes to NYPD policies would you propose to change or address these problems? And how do you plan on working with stakeholders to address the NYPD policies that impact these groups, women of color, immigrant women and gender non-conforming New Yorkers? And I'll start with you, Councilman Richards.
First off, we need to get this body cameras program rolled out right away. I think it's critical in ensuring that there's more transparency around what's going on with police and their interactions with all communities. I think, secondly, it's going to be critical that we strengthen, once again, capacity of local organizations, right? Because people, even as people deal with elected officials, right? You know, there's always this trust, but then there could be mistrust, right? So I think it's critical that as we move forward, that we build capacity in a lot of communities that are underserved and represent these constituencies to ensure that there are places that people can go where they feel they can report these things and we can be, and the organizations in particular, can be liaisons between the communities. I think also, there's a lot more work we have to do around the CCRB. I think we have to add teeth to the CCRB. Too many people are reporting things and they're not, they are not, people are not being held accountable. And I think that that's where the culture shift absolutely needs to happen. Individuals who engage in activities that are targeting communities should be held accountable. And I think if we send that message strongly, then we'll see a lot of this reduced. But I think body cameras, community policing, making sure that's rolled out in every community is going to be a critical piece in this strategy in addressing this issue.
I will continue working to invest more resources to establish more police community initiative. I was arrested in 1989. And El Diario La Prensa wrote editorial saying, "There's no freedom on 1/1st." And I was represented by Center for Constitutional Right, John Gibbs, who was a professor, a mega ever. So I've been organizing since the 80s, the 90s, the 2000s. And we have seen how much progress we have made in the last four years, being able to see how the NYPD was retraining all the forces in the last few months, in the last year. It's progress, being able to get more reform on the stop and frisk. Those are things that we at the council can say that we were part of that solution. However, that's not enough. Police officers, they have to be more accountable. They have to be more transparent. I think I agree with the body camera. It's something that we should be expanding. It's not only should be manipulated or controlled when the police want to activate those cameras. It should be working 24/7 during the time that the police officers, they are patrolling our street. And we need to expand our police-community relationship initiative.
So I come from Queens and we have an incredibly diverse community, obviously immigrant-rich, and a very, very large and growing trans Latina population, in particular in Woodside, Jackson Heights, Corona, Elmhurst. And I have seen firsthand how members of that community definitely feel and are the subject of great violence on the streets far too often, but oftentimes lack the trust to go to the police department if there is an incident. We had an attack on a trans Latina, a woman who was undocumented, violent attack just last year in Woodside, Queens. We were out there in full force to make sure that this couldn't happen. But we've got to do more to make sure that the patrol guide is clear on how our communities are to be interacted with and respected. And also, I would just add one very specific point. There has been this horrific practice of if condoms are found on people who are stopped, that there is the presumption of guilt and of criminal activity. That has to be stopped right away. There should be no assumptions made. If someone has a condom on them, particularly a trans Latina who's on Roosevelt Avenue, doesn't make a difference, damn but a difference what time it is of night, there should be no presumption of any criminal activity. It is a good thing that people have condoms on them and not a bad thing.
Is that something that you can, a change that can be made at the city level? Or is that a state law change that has to...
Oh, I think we have the ability to impact that with the NYPD, absolutely.
Often, I'm accused of being too activist. And I say, "Thank you very much." And I say, "Yes, I'm an activist that achieve. I'm an activist that produces." And I say, "What of my activism has been produced that you disagree with?" That's when people usually go silent. So when we talk about stop, question and frisk and policing, that has a place that I had demonstrable leadership on. And always amusing to me is it's talked about as if that leadership, the type and the style, would have somehow not helped that happen. And so it's important because, as my colleague just mentioned, the, alluded to, the Community Safety Act was the largest expansion of LGBT and TGNC community up until my colleague, Councilmember Johnson. And I say that because it was so important. Without the trans voice, we probably wouldn't have it done. When they came and testified about what my colleague just spoke about, about police going in their bras and finding condoms and charging them prostitution, that moved me. And I had no idea about it until they spoke up. And that was the importance to me of inclusivity, making sure that all voices are heard. And as I said, I've been black for a pretty long time. So I understand the issues with policing. Just to answer your question really briefly, all the things that my colleagues said are correct. You can't legislate morality and we have to make the environment change. There are two areas where we haven't done that. We have done some good things, I want to give credit. But there are two areas where we haven't done that, where this administration just has failed. One is transparency. We've gone backwards when it comes to things like 58. And accountability, we haven't done much there. I guarantee you, if officers started being held accountable like other people who are in our city for actions that are illegal, immoral and cause death, it will be immediate change in how people and the community deal with each other.
So just a quick point of privilege. I'm the only one on stage who's actually been black longer than Giovanni. But I agree with all my colleagues, but just would like to add the small caveat that enforcement is a big issue. And I think we have to be prepared to look at characterizing these negative interactions with protected classes as hate crimes. And really forcing the community to have a discussion around the level that it rises to when someone is from those protected classes or those communities is harassed. So I would really focus on trying to bring transparency and bring emphasis on those negative interactions, especially with law enforcement and in that, you know, and in the department as hate crimes.
I'm glad Councilman Van Bremmer brought up condoms as evidence because it is such a big issue. You know, Laura, the council did do something on this, which was, I believe it was Councilman Williams and Manchaca had been working with the five DAs in the Five Boroughs, as well as the NYPD, on changing policy. It took a while to get all the DAs to agree with each other on how they were going to handle it, but it's a big issue. In my district, I have Christopher Street, which has been a community center point for a lot of LGBT youth of color who have come down there to be on the piers and to be on Christopher Street. And one thing that the Sixth Precinct has done, which is a local police precinct that covers that area, is they've worked with nonprofit organizations like The Door and other organizations on how to interact with young LGBT people of color in a real way, real police-community relations. We have to build models of that all over the city on how we go about doing that. We have to not criminalize people for survival sex, which is a big thing in New York City. We have to recognize that that is a thing and that people are not doing that typically because they want to. They're doing it because they're trying to survive because of the oppression and marginalization that they faced. So there's a whole series of things that need to be done. Criminal justice is probably the biggest issue in New York City, along with affordability, and those two come in hand in hand.
Well, you made reference to this horrific case in Brooklyn and the defense of those officers, it's incredible, is that it was consensual. And it turns out there's a loophole in the law that it's illegal for a correction officer to engage in sexual activity with someone who's detained, but not a police officer. So that's allowing them to make that defense. Now, we have a colleague, Mark Traeger, from Brooklyn, who has a bill that would put a stop to that. There should be no ability to use a defense like that. It's absurd. You talked about the challenge of the undocumented interacting with law enforcement. And we've made big progress here. ICE used to roam around Rikers at will. And we have largely kicked them out, except in very, very, very narrow, strict cases. Basically, they have to have an order from a judge. So that's been a huge improvement. And we've put in place policies that prevent ICE from going into our public schools, our public hospitals. The courts, however, are a battleground. And they are state-controlled, they're not city-controlled. There have been several cases, one last week, where an undocumented person has showed up for a court date having nothing to do with immigration and has been detained by ICE in the court. If you're not safe in a court, then we have a huge problem. And that's going to result in undocumented New Yorkers refusing to interact with law enforcement, even if they are victims of crime or witnesses of crime. So we have to get ICE out of the courts. That has to be a safe space for every New Yorker, no matter the documentation.
Just one last reminder, if you have an index card, can you just please pass it back? Our next question is on community support and opportunity. I'm going to start with you, Councilmember Rodriguez. A growing number of individuals and families are being pushed out of their homes and neighborhoods due to increasing rent prices and invictions. A 2014 IBO report confirmed that the overwhelming majority of families entering the shelter system, 93% from 2002, 2012, were families led by women. Domestic violence accounts for about one-fourth of shelter entries. Closely behind invictions and overcrowding, homelessness and insecure housing for trans women in GNC communities has been complacent long before the more recent homelessness crisis in New York City began. How will you address the lack of affordable housing, putting many New Yorkers, especially women in GNC communities, people who are domestic and intimate partner violence survivors, at risk of becoming homeless and housing insecure?
I believe that there's not a secret that housing is a crisis, that today we have an average of 16% of a student going to a New York City public school.
an average of sixteen percent of a student going to a New York City public school, that's they so they live in some type of shelters. We have a role model, we have, let's say, Broadway Housing, eh, that one fifty-fifth in Eschen. It's a new model for affordable housing, where a great percentage were people who were homeless. And they've been able to show that they know how to build housing and maintain those those apartments with a quality that they deserve. I believe that we have to keep working with a public and private partnership to increase the subsidy, so that we can increase the percentage of affordable housing that now we will be able to bring to our community. Many areas of our city being gentrified. Long Island City, Brooklyn, Harlem is not black majority, it's not majority black anymore. The same thing can happen in northern Manhattan. If we don't put a tool in place to be sure that when we build affordable housing, we build for the average median income of our community, understanding that more than forty percent of New Yorkers are living on the poverty line today, and we have to build not only for those who make the hundred thousand dollars, or eighty thousand dollars, or the thirty thousand dollars, also for those percentages who live on the poverty, on the poverty lines.
So first, I just want to say, I'm proud of the work that we've done with the homeless shelters that we have in our district, where some folks are protesting and screaming at the women and children outside of these shelters. I've said in my district, we are not doing that, we are never doing that. And instead, I've gone in to the shelters, met with the women and their children, and sought how we can help them to achieve the stable and permanent housing that they're looking for. The second thing I'll say is that, obviously, we have an opportunity and an obligation that when folks talk about affordable housing and they talk about rezonings, that we use those as opportunities to drill down, go further, and provide meaningful affordable housing, deeper levels, including for those who were formerly homeless. So that's what we're looking to do, even in a neighborhood like Long Island City that I represent, where previous rezonings led to zero affordable housing. We're gonna correct that past mistake and, going forward, make sure that everyone can afford to live in every neighborhood.
Can you read the question again, please?
A growing number of individuals and families are being pushed out of their homes and neighborhoods due to increasing rent prices and evictions. A twenty fourteen IBO report confirmed that the overwhelming majority of families entering the shelter system, ninety-three percent from two thousand and two, two thousand and twelve, were families led by women. Domestic violence accounts for about one-fourth of shelter entries, closely behind evictions and overcrowding. Homelessness and insecure housing for trans women in GNC communities has been complacent before, long before the more recent homelessness crisis in New York City began. How will you address the lack of affordable housing, putting many New Yorkers, especially women in GNC communities, people who are domestic and intimate partner violence survivors, at risk of becoming homeless and housing insecure?
Thank you. Just for clarity, that's not Trump that did that. That's us here in New York City, so we have to be clear about that. As the Housing Chair, this is another area where I provided demonstrable leadership. My voice has been outsized. One of the, my proudest moments is when Association for Neighborhood Housing Development gave me the Housing Champion Award, after I pushed on MIH and mandatory inclusion in housing. Ultimately, voted no, because we didn't do all that we could have done. And and many of our voices have been vindicated because they're now making the changes that we had asked. Unfortunately, we lost time, and so we lost the ability to to add housing. I would like to review the MIH and see if there's changes that we can make to take away things like, to prevent some of the confusion around member differences, that's a longer conversation. But I'm very proud that I had a domestic violence bill that now codifies in human rights law, that you cannot discriminate against someone because of the domestic violence. And I'm, it's a very proud moment. I just want to shout out Lou Fiddler, who did a lot of good work around runaway youth, and it's important that we continue to push them. As my colleague mentioned, survival sex, particularly around women and LGBT TGNC community, is very big. We have to have additional income targeted housing. There is so many things that I can discuss around this, and I'm out of time. The state needs to give us more power in the city so that we can do what it is that we need to do. Lastly, we need to make sure our housing plan matches the people who are suffering the most right now. It doesn't. We have two plans, a homelessness plan, a housing plan, two commissioners, Housing Commissioner, Homelessness Commissioner, two deputies, one for housing, one for deputy mayor. That doesn't make sense. They are connected, we have to discuss it like they are.
So first of all, the city of New York has done a tremendous amount over the last eight years as it relates to addressing gun violence. But what's not being stated is the number one violence in the city of New York is domestic violence, and has been the root cause for a lot of the gun violence that we see. I took or was elected with my eye keenly on being a good fiscal steward. And what I know is that it takes three times as much money to temporarily house a family than it does to provide long-term, sustainable, affordable housing for a family. So the money is actually there. A redirection of those funds into long-term, sustainable housing over a long period of time will give us the result that we need. And those families that you mentioned, through domestic violence and through other means, need not only housing, but they need support services so that they can remain in long-term, sustainable housing.
I'm glad you brought up that point of support services. Can you give an overview as to what support you think would be best then and implemented?
So there are so many services, whether it's whether it's in and around supporting financial savings, whether it's in and around education, whether it's in and around mental health. There are so many needs that the chronically homeless face, that they can't expect to be housed long-term and sustainably when there's so much crisis in the unit. And you mentioned families that are obviously in crisis, that find themselves in the in in the shelter system. They need support services, not only while they're there, but once they are finding long-term, sustainable housing, there need to be support services so that they can remain housed.
So the very first bill I passed in the city council was a bill that said, if you are a domestic violence victim, you are deemed presumptively eligible to go into DHS. What does that mean? Previously, before my bill passed into law, if you were in a DV shelter, domestic violence shelter, you were capped out after a hundred and twenty days. Hundred and twenty days, you had to leave that shelter, you couldn't stay any longer. You then would need to go up to the Bronx, to the intake center for DHS, if you were a woman, with your children, be interviewed by DHS in front of your children about why should they transfer you to DHS. It was a demeaning, horrifying process, and so my bill corrected that and said, if you're a woman, if you're anyone, and you're going from a domestic violence shelter, you are deemed presumptively eligible to get into a homeless shelter without having to go through that process. That was the first bill that I passed in the city council. Everyone said it, I'm not gonna repeat what everyone said. Homelessness is probably the biggest crisis we're facing right now in New York City. Sixty-two thousand people in the shelter system tonight, almost ten thousand people living on the streets. It's an affordability crisis. Councilmember Levine deserves a lot of credit for his Right to Counsel bill. It's gonna make a huge difference. We have to get our rent laws back into our power and our control. I was arrested inside the Capitol in Albany with Jomani Williams and other folks protesting our rent laws, because we need to ensure that New Yorkers have a safe, affordable place to live and should not be displaced and pushed out of their neighborhoods.
Well, you correctly assessed the homelessness crisis as being, in great measure, a crisis of eviction. We do have an epidemic of eviction in this city, and for decades, it's been driven by the fact that in New York City's housing court, there's been no right to counsel. So if you, as a tenant, did not have money to pay for an attorney, you were on your own. And so less than ten percent of tenants have had attorneys historically in the city, almost every landlord does. The result has been over twenty thousand evictions a year, and I am so proud that we have put an end to that by making New York City the first place in America to have a right to counsel for all tenants facing eviction in housing courts. And this is gonna be a game changer for tenants. It's gonna take a couple of years to build out, but already, we have seen a twenty-seven percent drop in the number of evictions in New York City, and an incredible phenomenon that people on the front lines are reporting, legal aid attorneys. The number of cases, of eviction cases being brought by landlords is starting to drop because they used to get away with never facing an attorney on the other side, and so it was very easy for them to bring frivolous cases, and that's changing for them. So we need to get the word out. Everyone knows you have a right to counsel in criminal court because we see it on on Law and Order. But now, we need to get the word out to our communities, to our neighbors. The system is set up on three-one-one, so if nothing else, you can call three-one-one, and the operator will know how to connect, hopefully not you, but someone you know, to an attorney if you're facing an eviction or if you're facing landlord harassment. I could talk more about this if we have time, but we need the help of activists like you to help other New Yorkers understand this important new right.
So I'm proud to chair the zoning committee, and one of the things that we saw when I came in was developers rezoning neighborhoods without being mandated to put in affordable housing. So now, when a developer comes before the city council with an application and wants a little bit more density of height and want a zoning change, they are required to put in affordable housing. One of the things we are doing differently now, which we have to get more aggressive about, and the HPD changed their term sheets, the Housing Preservation and Development Corporation, to now require ten percent, five to ten percent of units in these rezonings be set aside for homeless families. One thing we can do is perhaps look at increasing that number more, right? Secondly, we should look at public housing. You know, we're not setting aside enough units for homeless families in public housing every year. So that that number, I believe, has increased, but we can be doing a whole lot more there. Lastly, I had a rezoning recently in the Rockaways, which is gonna produce thousands of units, and I'm proud to say, one of the projects that is that we're gonna break ground with with related companies is going to encompass around three hundred units for formerly homeless women veterans with families. And that is going to be an amazing project because it not only is housing, but we're having Wynn coming, which is run by Christine Quinn, and some other wraparound organizations come in to make sure that services are being provided to our formerly homeless women as well, who are in the, who are homeless women who are in the system, who will now be able to have permanent housing located. I'll lastly say that supportive housing is also a critical piece of this equation. The state needs to do more. Assemblymember Hevissey has a bill that needs to be passed, which will provide more subsidy for families as well.
On this, on the subject of budget and governance, under Speaker Mark Viverido, the city council successfully negotiated its on-time budget with three women of color negotiating it. It's like the opposite of Albany. City Council Finance Chair Jalissa Ferreras, the City Council Finance Director Latonya McKinney, and the speaker herself. There are far fewer women in the city council next term, as we've already said, and no trans members in a city council that is lacking in gender diversity and in a city council that doesn't reflect the city of New York. How do you each intend to build leadership among both members and your most senior leadership team that is inclusive of cis and trans women and women of color in particular? And starting with you, Councilman Van Bramer.
Thank you very much. Well, first, I think all of us should take a moment to appreciate the fact that for the last twelve years, a woman has led the New York City Council, both Christine Quinn and Melissa Mark Viverido. So I think we should all give a big round of applause to twelve years of female leadership. And what I will definitely pledge to you is that if I am lucky enough to be the city council speaker, that we would definitely have a senior leadership team and a leadership team that is a majority people of color and women, and that is at the highest levels. It is absolutely incredibly important that we do that, that we uplift and empower. I also want to say, though, that all of us up here are related to women, and yet patriarchy still exists. Women are fifty percent of the workforce, so none of us deserves a gold star for making sure that women are in these positions and roles. The truth is, they always should be in these roles. So if I am the speaker, we'll make sure that we have a leadership team that is representative of the city, and with a special emphasis on women in particular, because having eleven women out of fifty-one in the New York City Council is a tragedy in in how we will govern for the next four years, but also for all of the young women who are out there looking at this body. It is absolutely imperative that we fix this now, and we all do what we can to make sure that women are in leadership positions, which I've always done at the community board level and other levels, and that's what I would do as the speaker as well.
Oh, sorry, I to interrupt. And you can debate the merits of whether or not this is valuable or not, but would you commit to making a woman or a person of color or a trans person the leadership of one of the most powerful committees, the land use and the finance committee? Is that something that you would commit to? You can say why not. Sorry.
I I would commit to having a trans person in that role if we had a trans member of the New York City Council. But I I think that, look, I have committed to having as diverse a leadership team as possible, including at the highest levels. And yes, I think women and people of color have to occupy, if I'm the speaker, some of those positions.
Just repeat the question.
Oh, essentially, how do you intend to build leadership among both the members and your most senior leadership team, if you're elected the speaker, that is inclusive of cis and trans women and women of color in particular?
Thank you very much. I have probably one of the more diverse staffs. Ever since I came on, I wanted to make sure that happened for the past eight years. White, black, Jewish, LGBT, everyone's mixed in right now. Almost half of my staff are women. It's very important to me to make sure I'm not just talking about something, that I'm actually doing it. It is appalling that there are only eleven women in the city council, two Latinas, one Asian. The data shows that when women run, they win as much as men, which means there's something structurally that's preventing that from happening, and we have to try to fix that. I am committed to, if I'm speaker, any deal is being made, those leadership positions have to be diverse. You can't go from three powerful women running the budget to none. And so there are a few powerful decisions, we know what they are. I'm committed that they are diverse and including women's voices, including the staff, as I mentioned. It's not about women's issues, it's about every issue, making sure that women are there at the highest level so that their voice is heard, so that we can make a decision that makes the most sense. I put out a white paper a few weeks ago. In that paper, it praised the current speaker for what she's done. I want to build on that. I want to perhaps have an internship and scholarship in her name so that we can have a pipeline of young women coming up, and hopefully, that number will increase and increase rapidly.
So as co-chair of Black, Latin, and Asian Caucus, in my first term in that role, myself and Richie Torres demanded a full accounting of ethnicity across the board in the New York City Council. And committed, were committed to what we saw anecdotally, which didn't represent necessarily, especially in the leadership roles, in central staff, a commitment to increase those numbers. We got the accounting back last week, and it shows that we've doubled in minority hires over her tenure, so I want to give her full credit for that. I would commit to doing that to include trans, as well as women, in that profile to be increased in the body in the same fashion that the speaker, the current speaker, was able to commit to doing that and getting results that matched our needs as a caucus.
The answer is yes. Right now, my district director is an amazing African-American woman who I do not cross. She tells me what to do, and she's just, she's one of the people who runs my district office, and she's been with me since day one. And I think that shows, you know, she's like the person who runs my district office. So I'm really grateful for her leadership. I would commit to, as Councilman Van Bramer said, a majority of the leadership team be women and people of color. I think that's really important, as well as key committees. If we look about what's happening in this country right now, you saw in Virginia a few weeks ago, we almost flipped the General Assembly there. Almost all the seats we took were women who took on Republicans. Last night, a special election in Georgia and the suburbs of Atlanta, a woman flipped the seat from Democrat to Republican. Twenty-seven-year-old lesbian in Oklahoma, a seat that Donald Trump won by forty points three weeks ago, she flipped it from Republican to Democrat. Women need to be out there running for office, and we need to do all we can to encourage women to run for office and be in leadership positions.
Well, I'm very proud of the fact that my staff at the city council is today and has been for the last four years, majority women, majority people of color, and that's been true of every team that I managed in my career in the nonprofit sector before this, and I would continue that record if I'm lucky enough to be speaker by assuring we meet those goals in the staff of the council and in the leadership within the body. But the time to start working to get more women into the body in twenty-twenty-one is now. We cannot wait till two or three years from now. We have to begin to empower strong women candidates, to encourage them, to support them. It is not easy to run for office. You have You have to raise money. It's a complicated undertaking, and we, all of us, need to begin to look for candidates to succeed us. I think we're all terminated in this term, and we need to support candidates in other districts, strong women, transgender, and of course, gender not conforming candidates throughout the city. The time to start is now.
I'll start with a citywide view. First, we need to look at agencies across the city. We need to make sure that there's perhaps a gender diversity compliance officer across agencies, making sure that there's accountability and that we're diversifying our ranks. CWA 1180 also had a bill that I would hope to revisit. What we're seeing across city agencies right now is there are people of color, women of color, trans community in there, but they're not being promoted to the managerial positions. And we need to take a close look at what's going on across this city. There are more than enough qualified women of color and people in the trans community that should not just necessarily be workers, but should be lifted up into the highest heights of government as well. Secondly, I would commit to certainly looking at the budget negotiating team and leadership to make sure that every woman in the council certainly has a role in both places. Lastly, I'll say, listen, I don't want to sit up here in line and say that I'm going to select who has the finance and land use committee, because we all have power brokers that we're talking to at play, but I do think it is the responsibility of all of us who sit here, whomever it is, who sits in front of the people who will also have a say in where committees go, to ensure that we are advocating to ensure that women are in a lead role and are taking prime committees in the council as well.
New York City has a great opportunity to leave by example, to be a role model to the whole nation and to the whole world. We can celebrate that we are the only city probably in the whole world in the developed nations, that we can say that we've been built by people that come from all over the world. Only in New York City we can say that someone like myself, that came here at the age of 18, when I was speaking the language, was able to make it through college, being a teacher, co-founder to a school, now at the council for a year, and hopefully the new speaker. However, we need to be realistic. Think, imagine the first day when you had the budget section at the council. Look in the right side and look the faces of the attendants there. They are mainly white male in that room. So we can leave our society much better for the future generation. We fought Donald Trump for many reasons. One, he had built a white male cabinet. If the speaker is white, New York City will have the mayor, the controller, and the speaker being white. We want to leave by example. We have overqualified candidates, that they're ready to be the speaker who are candidates of color. But regardless if the speaker is myself, a person of color, or one of my white colleague, we need to be sure that the leadership of the council represents the LGBTQ community, people of color, in real leadership, not in the middle, but in the top.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to start with you, Councilmember Jomani Williams. What role will you have in securing legislative priorities for members and ensuring policies that address the needs of women and communities of color are advanced?
That's a great question. Like I've been saying, I think all the issues we're talking about have intersectionality, and that's why it's so important that I feel like I don't discuss this as particular women's issues. Again, all of the issues we discussed have intersectionality, and sometimes I feel like, unfortunately, someone like my mom has the burden of doing so much, but then someone like my mom may not be in the power of decision-making, even though she has a lot of the burden. So it is important that there is such a diverse leadership, that there are so many things I've learned from my staff, or when my deputy chief of staff is a woman, so many things that I may not have understood without those voices around. I may not have understood the importance of including the LGBTQ, GNC community in the Community Safety Act if they weren't included. Those voices have to be included, or else the policies you make don't include them. And it has a deleterious effect. So the biggest thing I want to do is make sure that I surround myself with that diverse community. One of the most eye-opening hearings I heard was something Councilmember Johnson brought up. It was catcalling. I literally, just being a sister-in-a-man, didn't understand until I heard it that day. And it dawned on me that from the time you start to become a teenager, when you go for some bread or you go to work, you're dealing with things almost your entire life. That opened eyes for me, and it's so important to make sure that people are around me that don't look like me, sometimes disagree with me, so that I can have a clear vision of the decisions that need to be made.
The best, most important pieces of legislation that I've been able to author in the New York City Council have been informed by rooms just like this. So I don't profess to be a genius or guru, but I do have connectivity with people in different demographics. My partnerships with the Women's Caucus has yielded an understanding and knowledge about what the city can do and should do in partnership. So I, from a speaker's perspective, will continue those partnerships, which have gotten me to a place of understanding and being a consensus builder within the New York City Council.
I think it's really about not being paternalistic. And what I mean by that is, it's about really listening, and listening to a diverse set of voices and knowing that, you know, I have to recognize, and I've said this at other forums, that I have privilege because of the color of my skin and because of my gender. When I walk into a Duane Reade, no one's following me around thinking I'm going to shoplift. And when we talk about these issues, it's important that the leadership is not coming from me if I'm speaker, or probably from any of the folks up here if they're speaker, but from the communities that we're trying to help and give an impact to. That means listening. That means understanding these issues, and that means sometimes stepping aside and letting other people lead. There's a saying that I tell myself, that someone has told me, which is, doesn't need to be said, doesn't need to be said by me, and doesn't need to be said now. And I ask myself that question sometimes, and most of the time, the answer is, no, no, and no, there are other people that should say it.
Well, you know, we're tragically down to only 11 women in the city council. We were up to 19 in a previous era. There's a little bit of silver lining here. It's 11 incredible women, including four newly-elected women leaders of color, who are going to immediately be stars, I have no doubt, in the body. We need to empower that group of 11 women. We need to empower the Women's Caucus. I'm committed to giving them a full-time staff person. This has not happened before in previous city councils. We need to take this value for marginalized communities into the fight over a budget which is about to move into a storm. We had to do a budget amendment in November that cut 200 million out of revenue. We're facing cuts from Washington. We need to make sure that the voices of marginalized communities now are heard at this time when people on the right are going to be telling New York City to cut services, services that impact communities of color, that impact the LGBT community. This is a time where we need progressive leadership in our body, in the city council, to stand up, listening to the voices in this room and in the communities we represent, to fight where it matters, to preserve resources for the communities who need it.
So I'll say the answer lies right here. All of the people who co-sponsored this tonight are going to be critical pieces. The top-down approach is not necessarily the approach the speaker has to take, I think, from the ground up. So when I say that, I think policies that perhaps people in this room come up with are will be important, because like Jomani said, we don't know everything, and I don't pretend to know everything, but there may be policies that are critical to you that we can certainly move in the council, and I think that's where we should start. Secondly, I'll speak about the Young Women's Initiative, which I'm very proud of the work. I remember you, you were a little nervous at the State of the City, but you kicked butt. But I think we should look at that platform, and not only look at it, but if there are monetary asks attached to those things, we need to think about fully funding those things. So I think it's important, it's males who sit up here with privilege, that we look at the initiatives that the Young Women's Initiative have come up with, things that are important to the Women's Caucus, and that we certainly take them and prioritize them and make them the highest of the priorities we have in the council. I also commit to coming back here to meet with each and every group here or whoever you so choose to make sure that we follow through on this commitment.
Councilmember Richie. So now we're going to start. What's the question? I started off at millions.
I did not answer this question.
Should I go?
How did that happen? Did we skip you, Dinesh? Did you answer this one?
I don't think he answered this one.
What is the, no, no, hold on. What, no, what is the question?
Sorry, it's 20 debates we had.
The question was, what role will you have in securing legislative priorities for members and ensuring policies that address the needs of women and communities of color are advanced?
Well, first of all, like, as I, in my, as I said before, that I'm one of 12 brothers and sisters, first ever women. Now, I have two daughters and my wife, so women rule my life. And when it comes to, you know, being in school, I used to be in school for 13 years. I have one of my former students here, who used to, who now is a lawyer. So he can tell you about everything that we do, developing leadership among our students, not during the contract hours, but in the after-school, in a Saturday program. I believe it is important to bring the process or create new legislation to the people. As we have a participatory budget, what I would do in January is that I would start also a legislation participatory initiative, where we go to the grassroots community and open the process, working with some of the law school in NYU, Columbia, CUNY, invite those lawyers to work together in partnership with this institution to be sure that the whole process of legislation is more democratic side, democratic as it is right now.
So I want to echo some of the comments of Councilmember Johnson, and with the discussions going forward, I think we have to make sure that women are centered in those conversations and leading those conversations, and we're taking a step, which sometimes we don't, which is to listen. I also want to say, I've introduced a few different proposals. One is gender and race audits, but also gender budgeting, which I think will get us a long way towards making sure that every single decision we make, whether it be legislative or budget, is looked at through the prism of how we are impacting women, how we are impacting people of color, and making sure that there is equity. And if we are doing those things and committed to race and gender audits and gender budgeting, then we will be able to do that in a way that we've never done it before. It's a level of commitment that we've never seen before. We don't have those things now. We need them absolutely. Those are some of the things that we would do.
So now we're going to have our lightning round. It's a yes or a no question. Will you, I'm going to start with you, Councilmember Carnegie, of course. Will you commit to staffing your senior team and city council central staff with plus 50% women and TNGNC people?
Yes.
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 I'm not going to get ran out of this room.
Yes.
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 It's an awesome goal. Hope to achieve it.
If you become speaker, do you commit to continue the speaker's commitment to young cis and trans girls and GNC, young people of color, to support the Young Women's Initiative and to work with the administration to ensure that the policies and programs that result from it are meaningfully implemented?
Yes.
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 100%.
Yes.
Absolutely. Check out my next chapter white paper. Hold this whole section there about it.
Yes.
All right, so Gay Men's Health Crisis, Sylvia Rivera Law Project, Trans Latina Network, The Center, Make the Road New York, The Audre Lorde Project, Anti-Violence Project, Let a Process that Centers TNGC New Yorkers in Determining Policy Solutions Called Solutions Out of Struggle and Survival. If you become speaker, do you commit to working with these organizations and community members in the creation, implementation, and evaluation of these policies?
Yes.
Hell, yes.
Yes.
So because you mentioned her name, I just have to issue a fun fact. I actually shared a jail cell with Sylvia Rivera, which, when I'm retired, I'm going to do a one-act play based on that night, because if you haven't spent a night in jail with Sylvia Rivera, you don't know what you're missing. The answer is yes to that question.
I have a simple absolutely. I can't top what he just said.
Yes.
Yes.
Really? I haven't heard that before.
We, we are, we ran out of time or are running out of time, so we're not going to be able to get to the audience questions, but if I could, I'll hold on to them and disseminate them widely to the other reporters who cover City Hall, so you won't escape having to answer them at some point in the near future. And I want to invite up, if I could, just for a moment, our Councilwoman Rosenthal, just to say.
You know, I want to thank everyone here for doing this and then for coming out tonight. It's great to recognize and acknowledge the fact that in the next council, there will be, only 20% of the body will represent 50% of the population, and we need to make sure that one of these men, whoever becomes speaker, or there might be a little surprise, just kidding, just kidding, that whoever, that whoever is the next speaker, that we continue to hold their feet to the fire every day, and I'm counting on you for that. I do want to say, the Women's Caucus interviewed all these men about a month ago now, and I guess for all of you, I would say, you've come a long way, baby. I like these answers. You made some real commitments in our interviews with all of you. We appreciate that. Those were tiny compared to what you're going to hear after January 3rd. This Women's Caucus is going to rule. And what, we're going to do that because we need to make sure that at least 50% of the body next time are women after 2021. And I'm very proud that, I think Donovan, you said that tonight, so I was really impressed. It's on you guys. You know, all 11 women have committed to mentoring young women, trans, to come into the council. We will mentor you. Call us, take us up on it. It's really hard work, and you have to start yesterday. So get on it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Helen Rosenthal, thank you so much. And thank you so much to Laura and Shatia for moderating. And of course, thank you to all the city council members for being here and for the work that you do, although we know there can only be one, know that we have this livestream on video. We have it, you know, documented, transcribed, and we are committed and actually poised to helping you with your strategies and implementation strategies, even as city council members within the district. I want to, of course, thank everyone here tonight, everyone here who watched through livestream and social media, and of course, all the organizations that work tirelessly to put the one and only forum that focuses on cis, trans, and gender not conforming young people of color in New York City together, especially as the last forum for these candidates. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank especially the team at Girls for Gender Equity. Amazing, amazing team. Specifically, I'll say Kylan Greer. Thank you. And of course, we're here because of the tireless and fearless leadership of Sasha Huja. Thank you. And so as we close, I invite everyone to join us for a reception on the first floor from 8:00 to 9:00 p.m. Yeah? All right. Thank you so much.